Got it?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'd like to welcome everybody that's listening or watching. We have a slim crowd here tonight. Actually, it's just Commissioner Smith, myself, County Manager John Crumpton, Attorney Whitney Parish, and our Clerk to the Board Jennifer Gamble. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order for the Lee County Board of Commissioners. And we also have members of our board on the phone operating via teleconference. And I'll do the roll call with that. Cameron Sharp. Okay. Ariana Del Palazzo. Commissioner Del Palazzo, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear? Hello?
Okay, okay. Commissioner Robert Reeves. Commissioner Reeves, are you on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Kevin Dodson. Okay. Commissioner Andre Connect. Andre, are you on the line?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Everyone's here either in person or via teleconference. Okay, at this time, with all of the chatter and the noise and the 24-hour news cycle, we'll just stand for a moment of silence that is well-deserved, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
There's a slight delay.
There is a little delay. I understand. No, thank you all very much. Okay, again, this is a very different meeting, and I'm looking at Ms. Parish over here to give me some guidance on this as well. We need to, our first item of business needs to be the personnel policy change and the addition of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing, is the consideration of our remote participation meeting policy. I think you all have that. And I would just entertain discussion, questions, and Ms. Parish is here to weigh in as well. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the remote participation policy for public comments and public hearings, which includes some restrictions for comments during public hearings as a temporary measure to allow for public input while the county is under a state emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay.
Sorry, that, there's, um...
That's not on our end.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, that's for the added-on, we're going to have the public comments section for the added-on. The what's on the agenda for the consideration of remote participation meeting is...
You want it so people can hear?
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
What Commissioner Smith was talking about was the added-on, we're going to add on a policy for public comment and public hearing during the pandemic in case we have to have a public hearing when the public is unable to come into the meeting room. But what is on the agenda for the first item of business will be just the remote participation meeting policy of the board members, which was on the, in the agenda as Agenda Packet.
Right, right.
And it was drafted as a result of the last meeting when we thought that there might be a possibility that we would need to meet remotely due to all of the restrictions. And so at this time, if we could address that one first.
I'll retract my motion, and I will move to adopt the remote participation meeting policy as so presented.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Basically, we just need to vote on kind of the process we're using now because of the emergency situation. And it will only be a temporary way of us conducting business while we're going through this. Any more questions or discussion on the motion? Okay, all those, what I'm going to have to do is do a roll call, guys, because of the way the system works. So, Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Del Palazzo? Commissioner Reeves?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I have a question before I vote it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't hear the question.
Didn't hear the question.
Well, I never asked it because you never heard me.
I'm so sorry. We'll get through this.
All right, I understand. What I was trying to find out is on this new change or this new policy, will the public time limit remain the same, or will it be shortened?
That's, so Commissioner Reeves, that's going to be the other policy that we will ask you all to adopt that I emailed this afternoon or this sometime today, I don't remember when that was. The policy that Commissioner Smith made the motion to was dealing with the remote participation by the board members that we made the changes to because normally our board members aren't allowed to, you know, vote or participate.
Oh, all right. I got you now.
Okay.
I'm good, yes.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm in favor. Commissioner Sharp? Yeah, yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, Commissioner Connect?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that, I'll look at the clerk here, that was a unanimous vote. We'll get through this, folks. We'll weather through. Okay, and then...
Then this is where we add the remote participation for additional agenda items, ma'am. I ask to add on the remote participation for public comments and public hearings to the agenda.
Okay, do, we add that as a new business item? Okay, so that, that will be item E?
And then the next item I'd like to add, Madam Chair, is the resolution requesting North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper allow the Executive Order 121 to expire and reopen North Carolina for business.
Okay. So that will be item F? Any other additional items?
I'd like to add one.
Okay.
Right after that one, I'd like to add a request for the board to consider the Durham County mask.
Okay, thank you.
Policy.
Okay. Okay, any other additional items?
I believe we need to add a closed session at the end for discussion in reference to property acquisition.
Okay, if you couldn't hear, Ms. Parish, that was adding a closed session at the end. Okay, any more additions to the agenda? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have to do a roll?
Okay, I'm sorry, roll call. All right, Commissioner Del Palazzo? Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson? Commissioner Sharp?
Didn't hear him.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's better.
There's a little delay.
Yeah, sorry, Cameron. Commissioner Connect?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, and aye as well for me. Thank you. All right. Okay, now, should have almost made this a double vote. Okay, approval of consent agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the consent agenda? All right, we'll see if we can go a little quicker this time. Commissioner Del Palazzo? Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
I move to approve the consent agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're going to have bloopers when this is all over with, I'm sure. Okay. Commissioner Dodson?
This reminds me of satellite phone calls from half around the world.
Yes, yes. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Connect?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Aye, ma'am.
And myself. Okay. Right, thank you very much. Okay, now, at this time, we will move into public comments, and I'll call on our Clerk to the Board, Ms. Jennifer Gamble, at this time.
Just as a notification to the board, we did issue a public notice that asks that public comments be submitted by 3:00 p.m. today. We received 12 public comments since Friday, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through and read each of these public comments individually. Just as a little disclaimer, these comments are not, any representations made on behalf of the county, I'm reading these on behalf of the individuals that have submitted the comment. So, for the first comment was submitted by Linda Coombs. She says, "My name is Linda Coombs. My address is 1009 Frank Wicker Road, Sanford, North Carolina. I'm a member of the growing group reopen NC. We are over 55-plus as I write this email, growing by 10,000 a day, and I am passionate about getting Lee County and North Carolina open back to work because of facts and numbers don't lie. More deaths will occur from a shutdown than this virus. The political stunts must stop. Lives are being destroyed. Unemployment claims are up from 12,000 to 618,000. That's a 5100% increase in claims. The rule for every 1% rise in unemployment, there is a 2% rise in death rates overall. So that's a 6% in the unemployment rate, give or take. So how many lives will be lost due to completely, completely due to this shutdown? Lee County has a population of approximately 62,000 residents and only have had 18 cases. All of NC has a population of approximately 11 million and less than 5,500 cases. Do the math, and it is a small fraction. I do not make light of the virus, but in this time, we can admit that the hype was exaggerated, the models that were given were wrong. The hospitals in this state and Lee County do not warrant an extension, even medical staff is being furloughed. We have, we have people not getting treatments done that are devastating to their well-being because these procedures are deemed nonessential. If the state does not have enough supplies such as PPE, that is direct reflection of Roy Cooper's failure as a governor. It is the state's duty to have those necessary supplies. I am also speaking out in my infringement of my constitutional rights. The protest that took place last Tuesday was a huge overstep in government and proper authorities are involved. I strongly encourage those in authority of Lee County to uphold your dearest, and that is the Constitution. My rights do not stop where your fear begins, and a virus does not trump the Constitution. My forefathers fought and some died for days like this. Let freedom ring. Sign, Linda Coombs." Comment number two is from Haley Coombs. "My name is Haley. My address is 6416 Lemon Springs Road, Sanford, North Carolina 27332. I am writing to you to ask that you open the businesses of Lee County, that you stand against Cooper and anyone else that you would ask for an extension. The alarming rate of unemployment and the lack of getting unemployment to citizens is a grave danger. I would like to point out that death toll increases with unemployment rates. We cannot bear the shutdown to continue. It would be catastrophic, not to mention it won't be long, and we will have to endure hurricane season, and it will, it is expected to be a high activity year. The deaths and travesty from this shutdown will have superseded this virus that has been overhyped from the beginning. The models were wrong, and the deaths do not equate the shutdown. We were supposed to slow the spread and not stop it. Mission complete. It has slowed, and the impact from the virus has been minimal. Also, I would ask that you direct those in charge of media to stop the exploitation of this virus to create fear. Facts speak for themselves, and out of 62,000 residents, only 18 have gotten the virus. Zero deaths. It is pure insanity to think that we should allow this to continue. Out of 11 million people in all of North Carolina, we have around 5,400,000, 5,400 cases with only 452 hospitalized in the entire state. It is obvious the models were wrong. If our state is not prepared and ready to handle this after six weeks of dealing with shutdowns and warnings, then I would look to Roy Cooper and ask him why he failed us. Sign, Haley Coombs." Comment number three is from Susan Johnson. "Hello, my name is Susan Johnson, 1031 Frank Wicker Road, Sanford, North Carolina 27332. I wanted to give comment for your upcoming meeting scheduled for Monday, April 20. As a small business owner in Lee County, my business has been affected by the shutdown ordered by Roy Cooper. I have not been given a help as promised. No unemployment since NC DES can't fix how to help self-employed people. No SBA loans since they only want to fund big businesses, and now is out of money. And no social service help because I made too much money in March to even qualify, though I haven't worked since March 20. Bill still rolling with no help and no income. I am not the only business that hasn't been helped as promised. We must open Lee County and NC. If not, small businesses will lose everything, and a lot of them will not reopen. If that is the goal, congratulations, it has worked. The shutdown has destroyed our economy and is worse than the coronavirus itself. The media has created fear for no reason. The models used to predict what would happen have been wrong. Look at the numbers, they don't lie. Roy Cooper has used this shutdown to further his political agenda and try to take our constitutional rights. He has stepped on our First Amendment rights by not allowing us to go to church or to protest what he has failed the state by not being prepared and having the necessary supplies for an emergency. It saddens me that so many people don't fight, find the violation of the constitutional rights for our citizens a problem. We aren't talking about an offensive statute or statue or who uses a bathroom. This is about people being able to work, fight for their very survival. Most egregious is our governors who make executive orders and try to pass them off as laws. And to top it off, we are told that our First Amendment right to protest these orders is nonessential and that this is all for your safety. The bill of rights cannot be set aside when it's convenient for our government. If that's the case and it means nothing, this needs to stop. Lives are being destroyed, and it's not from the virus, it's from being shut down and from government. On top of that, you have the Director of the State Board of Elections trying to gain emergency powers to allow all male voting, and California style ballot harvesting in the upcoming election. Imagine the fraud. Votes will get lost and not counted. Thousands will vote for who are not eligible, and somehow dead people will vote. This is not acceptable. The 994,000 inactive voters must be removed from the voters' roles first. Government is overstepping their boundaries and is using fear tactics as a way to do it. NC must reopen now. I strongly encourage those in authority to uphold what people want and uphold our constitutional reopen Lee County and NC." She quotes Benjamin Franklin, saying that "those who wouldn't give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Comment number four is from Michael Upchurch. His address is 212 Upchurch Farm Road, Sanford, North Carolina 27332. "I am writing to ask that you stand against Roy Cooper and ask that he rescind his executive order. This order was unnecessary, and I understand that it was made on models that have proven to be wrong. Now that we know that the coronavirus impact has been minimal, I would like to point out, point out the numbers. The flu deaths in 2018 were 2,064, and we didn't lose our minds, we didn't shut a thing down. The total deaths in NC as of the time I write this email are 167. Can you believe that we have shut this state down and ruined lives over those numbers? While I realize every life matters and is a sad thing for each loss, in the same breath, every life matters, and we cannot trade a life for a life. To continue the shutdown would create more deaths for more people. We need to protect our elderly and those with compromised immune systems, but the rest of us should go on with our lives as normal. It seems as if the political leaders are using this virus to push the political agendas and stomp on our rights. I am here to tell you that we, the people, will not sit idly by and allow it. We have freedom running through our veins. Our history will tell you that we are the land of the free and the home of the brave. I am a proud grandson of a veteran who taught me to fight and stand for this country, what is this country is founded on. Do not allow the fear and media hype of the political agendas to cross lines of taking away our rights. We have the right to take responsibility for ourselves. I want, I also want to warn against forcing everyone to wear a mask. I myself suffer from anxiety and PTSD, and putting on my, a mask on my face would be impossible for me. There are a lot of people like this. If people want to wear a mask, that is great, and they're right, but let me choose what risk I want to take. We have slowed the spread, and now is the time to get back to work. Thank you." Comment five is from Chelsea Spivey, 2117 Hurston Drive, Sanford, North Carolina 27330. "I am writing to voice my concerns on the extended stay-at-home orders. Part of our Sanford charm is rooted in the abundance of small businesses, our parks and playgrounds. I am concerned that many of our local businesses will not be able to recover from the stay-at-home orders, nor can our communities' mental health take on, take much more isolation from some, for some people in our communities. Being outside is the joy they receive. It's also like to point out that if people are practicing safe distancing in the local Walmart and food line, there is no reason this cannot be done in other local stores and restaurants or open-air playgrounds and state parks. It's responsible to quarantine sick people. It's tyranny to place those same orders on healthy people. The longer these orders stay in place, the bigger the toll it's going to take on our families and our communities' mental health. Take a look in the police reports, there has been a rise in attempted suicides. It's not the government's responsibility to make sure we are in good health. It's their responsibility to uphold our constitutional rights." Thank you for taking the time to read this. The sixth comment is from Linda Hardy. Her address is 1863 Mentor School Road, Sanford, North Carolina. "I am asking you please stand with Lee County citizens and stand against Roy Cooper and the overreach of government that his executive order has done. I am 61 years old, and I do have COPD, but even with that, I do not believe we should continue with this shutdown. I am a free citizen that we can, that can take responsibility for my own body and my own actions. I understand and know the proper precautions to take. I also would never want to see my country, state, or nation suffer such tragedies as to lose so much because of this virus. I do not feel that the cure has become worse than the problem itself. I feel like we have done enough to get ahead of any risk and the virus may impose, and we should open this country, state, and county. I want my grandchildren, children, and future great-grandchildren to be able to have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness as lined out in our Constitution. Thank you, Linda Hardy." Comment number seven is from Jan Hill. "As a concerned Lee County voter, I would like to urge you to reopen Lee County. I am opposed to the continued shutdown of our state and the unconstitutional orders in place. I do not agree that the data supports the measures that have been taken by the governor's office and believe the local government is better able to determine the appropriate measures to protect those who are most vulnerable. I am concerned for the many families who are hurting for the businesses that are failing. Our economy is being devastated by this shutdown. As Governor Cooper states recently in his address, 497,000 unemployment claims have been filed since mid-March. I am hearing horror stories about trying to file claims and know of no one who has received any money. This is totally unacceptable. Healthy men and women should be allowed to work. I believe this shutdown is unconstitutional and that our freedoms are being violated. There must be better ways to isolate the sick and protect the vulnerable than shutting down our whole economy. Sincerely, Jan Hill." Comment number eight is from Lindsay Yao. "My name is Lindsay Yao. I am a self-employed hairstylist and would love to go back to work. I have been a stylist in Lee County for 18 years now, and I love our community. I think as, we as a stylists can make sure we limit the amount of clients daily and do proper sanitation as well. I can't wrap my head around us being shut down when Lowe's and other big chains are being able to stay open and not do proper sanitation or limit the amount of patrons coming in and out. Also, clients have a choice on coming to see us as well. Please help our small businesses recover by letting us have a choice." Comment number nine is from Kevin and Cecily Manus. "We fully believe it is time to reopen Lee County and the, in North Carolina as a family of four, and both incomes coming from self-employment, whose businesses have had to be closed for a month. It's a hardship, and unnecessary one-of-procautions can be carried out by us, the business owners. We have not received our stimulus checks, denied unemployment, and were unable to get the sm-" the small business loans even though we qualify and have followed the directions of all the supporting professionals we have contacted. The system has many flaws and we are keeping our heads above water the best we can. It's time to let us open up and get back to work with precautions and procedures put in place to protect our customers and ourselves. Thank you very much, Kevin and Cecily Manus. Comment number 10 is from Jeff Reed. He says, I feel that our community is responsible enough to be allowed to, to open up our economy and get back to making money. We can practice safe social distancing in most all cases and I personally miss going to church each week and worshiping. I feel our governor has taken things too far, allowing ABC stores to remain open and closing churches. Those hardware is so crowded you can't get in and other small businesses are forced to close. Lee County residents are smart enough to make personal decisions about our health and community. Thank you for your consideration, Jeff Reed. Comment number 11 is from April Stone. Dear county commissioners, my name is April Stone. I live at 727 Forestwood Park Road, Sanford. I rent my booth at 108 North Gulf Street in Sanford from Mr. Sammy Poe. On March 25th at 5:00 p.m., all salons had to close per Governor Cooper's order. I have been in the business for 19 years now. That has been an extreme hardship on my family. The unemployment funding that is supposed to be for self-employed or contractors is yet to be seen. Yes, in fact, my claim says ineligible has been almost a month with no income at all and bills still continue, rents still due, yet I am not allowed to work and provide for my family. In my opinion, I would far rather go to my hairdresser than to Lowe's Home Improvement or Walmart where it seems everyone in Sanford wants, likes to frequent. I know all of my clients on a, on a one-on-one basis. For myself, I have my own personal room in which I could have one client at a time and sanitize after each client. Whether we are in masks, gloves, or a plastic bubble, we can still be exposed to COVID-19. I completely agree with protecting the public, but some of it is just plain old common sense. Wash your hands, social distance, and let us make decision whether or not it is safe for us to operate. I'm requesting that you strongly consider letting us go back into our salons. If we are mand, if we are mandatory made to shut down, then it should be mandatory that we are compensated. I feel it would be detrimental to our business and our small-town economy if we are forced to stay closed. Please vote to let us go back to work. We cannot stay shut down any longer. Sincerely, April Stone. And then the last comment, comment number 12 is from Penny Delgoodis. My name is Penny Delgoodis. I am a salon owner in Sanford employing seven stylists as well as myself. The stay-at-home order has been very challenging on each of, on each of each. We appreciate the effort of Governor Cooper to keep us all safe and out of harm's way, however, it's come at a price for us all. The government assistance has not come through for us as of yet and bills are, continue to come in. I feel depression and anxiety is all, is at an all-time high amongst myself and many other small business owners as well as employees who need income to make ends meet. I would continue on with negative effects, but I could choose to bring your attention to more positive. Before we are forced to close, our staff, we're taking all precautions to ensure the safety of each and every one of us, including our clients. I ensure we, we're stocked with, readily with supplies and ensured sanitation efforts were heightened, our efforts included, but we're not limited to. Printing, posting, reviewing, and complying with all State Board of Cosmetic Arts Safety and Sanitation methods. Printing, posting, and practicing proper handwashing compliance sent over by our board and utilizing this before and after each client. Sanitizing, sanitizing stations and chairs before e, and after each client, including shampoo bowls and chairs. Limiting our staffing and client scheduling in an effort not to exceed 10 people in the salon. Requiring clients have an appointment and not allowing additional people to come with them. Posting signs, asking people to make appointments instead of accepting walk-ins in an effort, another effort to minimize people in the salon. Sanitizing ink pens after each client as well as our sellers' counters, credit card machines, computer board, mouse and door handles. We also moved our seating area to where clients would be six foot apart and sanitized after each person. Removed books, magazines, as well as stopped offering complimentary coffee and waters. I could continue with the measures we took, however, I feel this gives you right insight as to the responsibility measures the staff at this salon took and will continue to take should we be allowed to go back to work. We are professionals at our jobs and pride ourselves on client stylist safety. We are ready to go back to the profession that we love. Please hear our voices and honor us by making this choice. Thank you for your time. Penny, business owner. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Well done.
Yes, thank you. Good letters all. Okay, we have no old business. So we'll move right into new business. And that is the personnel policy change that we were talking about at the beginning of the meeting, I believe, Ms. Parrish. And are you gonna go over that?
Yes, this one's mine.
Okay.
As are probably most of the rest of the ones. At our last meeting on March 16th, the commissioners passed Personnel Policy F-12, which was a personal leave associated with the pandemic. At the time, the commissioners agreed to give 40 hours of personal leave to the employees who were full-time and then part-time employees were granted one week's average pay. Between that meeting and this meeting, I used my authority under the Personnel Policy to increase that to 80 hours. And I do have a report here that shows that we already have employees that are out of the 80 hours. So, you know, that's the first policy that we need the board to confirm is, you know, going from the 40 hours to 80 hours. And then Personnel Policies F-13 and F-14 are related to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that was passed by Congress and the President. F-13 is the emergency paid sick leave, which requires anybody that qualifies to get 80 hours of paid sick leave. The Family Medical Leave Expansion under the Act requires the county to allow people who have essentially children issues to take 12, 12 weeks of family medical leave, which is paid, correct?
Paid at a two-thirds.
Pardon?
Paid at a two-thirds rate.
Yeah, paid at two-thirds rate. So, and we're not, you know, proposing that that two-thirds be supplemented. We've had a few inquiries on F-13 and F-14, but we have not had any takers as of yet. But we need approval for all three so that we're compliant and then we'll talk a little bit later about where we stand with our employees and, you know, from a, a layoff perspective and where our full-time employees are at this time.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the amendments to F-12 and the new additions to the F-13 and F-14 policies related to the COVID-19 pandemic and give the county manager the authority to exempt both healthcare and first responders from certain aspects of the policies and allow the manager to make necessary changes to the policies, which can then be ratified by the board at its subsequent meetings.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on the?
Question.
Yes, sir. Ye, yes, Commissioner Reeves.
I'm not gonna vote.
Called the question, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Comis, roll call. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Palazzo?
We gotta work on that satellite.
Yeah. Commissioner Del Palazzo? Okay. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Connect?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now we'll move on to Item B, the Resolution of the Board of Commissioners requesting the Board of Elections to hold a special election concerning the propositions concerning the sale of malt beverages and unfortified wine.
Yes.
And that's Ms. Parrish.
Yes, um, take this one.
Would you approve?
Okay. Well, well, okay, we've got a motion, but we may need her to just run through it real quick.
I'll, I'll do it very briefly for you all, because I, I know on the agenda there was a big memorandum that spelled all this out, but just very briefly, this is, I believe the third time this has come back to the board. In 2008, it failed in all townships. And then in 2012, what passed in all of the townships except for Pocket and Deep River is the allowing off-premise sale of malt beverages and then the off-premise sale of unfortified wine. And so that is allowed in all townships except for the Pocket and Deep River. We were contacted by a citizen in Deep River who owns a business that would like to sell the malt beverages and unfortified wine within their store. So in order to do that, we need a vote by this board with attached resolution that's in your agenda packet that will basically be passing the Board of Elections to places on the November 3rd general election, as, for it to be voted on by those townships. We did have some discussions. We decided to go ahead and place this forward with Pocket and the reason being is that that way it would be consistent depending on if it would move forward, if it was passed in those townships with all the other townships. And also, we're, we're suggesting to only, only put on the ballot the off-premise sale of malt beverages and the off-premise sale of unfortified wine as opposed to all the other options that could be gone, moved forward, but they all failed in all the other townships. So we just tried to make it as easy as possible and as consistent as possible, which would also satisfy the need of the individual.
Okay. Any, any questions for Ms. Parrish?
I vote aye.
Okay, okay.
No questions. It's just that Mr. and Mrs. Jay had, this would be the third time around, and they're right on Deep River Road, people that are going boating to Harris Lake and, and Jordan Lake, they just go down and they stop off at Pe Ridge and, not Pe Ridge, but Pittsboro and Moncur Road at the Exxon station there and they stock up and move out. That is also true on Avant's Ferry at Buckhorn with the store there. They finally got it and they're always busy. I'll go to work early in the morning and there's boats lined up and they're just beaming and booming. Poor Mr. and Mrs. Jay had a customer come in after the election or the vote and because it was tied, it didn't pass. And the gentleman asked her, did you, did you get your, your ability to sell? And she looked at, did you vote? And of course, he said, no. You're the reason why we can't do it. So, every vote counts.
Okay. All right. Well, we've, we've got the motion by Dr. Connect. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, all those in favor, we're gonna take the roll again. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Del Palazzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner, well, Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye, Madam Chair.
And aye as well. Okay, thank you. All right. Our next item is Item C under New Business, the Lee County Health Insurance Program. Dr. Crumpton?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman. This has been a highlight for several years, being able to present the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal for the county. We had an excellent claim year this year, which resulted in a zero increase in premium for the county. I would just tell you that with medical trend running 10 to 12%, us, we have beat the trend five out of the last six years and feel pretty good about where we are from a health wellness standpoint with the county and the effectiveness of our health clinic. So, you know, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I could keep reading and go over our coverage and that stuff, but I figured that was coming.
That's right.
Okay. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Reeves. Any more questions or discussion?
Dr. John?
Yes, sir.
Just, when I'm looking at this spreadsheet and it talks about change of 100%, I apologize, I wanted to ask the question prior. What does that mean? Change 100%? You've got it highlighted here in green.
Yes.
Or Joyce does.
It just, that just shows that the, the rate is staying the same. That's what 100% means.
Okay. And then on the renewal rates for, it says 101.82%?
Yes, that factors in the change for the retiree health insurance, which doesn't go into effect till January 1st and there will be a slight change in that that skews our little county change up. But the Medicare supplement that is for the retirees, that's, that's on a January 1st renewal. And so we've estimated what that would be on January 1st.
Okay.
So that the, so the board would understand that it's, you know, we do have a little piece that might be going up just a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Reeves to approve. So we'll do the roll call vote.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Del Palazzo?
They might need to count to two before they say yea.
Yeah.
That's a tough one.
Commissioner Del Palazzo?
I'm here, I, yes.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
And aye myself as well. Okay. All right. The next item is Item D under New Business, the Cox Maddox Road Subdivision Preliminary Plot. And we have Ms. Amy McNeil joining us to just give us a brief summation of this and remind us of this project. It seems like a while back that we talked. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. On page 158 in your agenda, you have a preliminary major subdivision plot for a 40-lot residential subdivision, public water, public streets, individual private septic systems. There's a sole report included within your agenda. The only item, the only design standard that doesn't comply with the UDO subdivision regulations is that the cul-de-sac length exceeds 1,000 feet. It is 1,245 feet. And because of that, there was a three-to-one vote with the planning board. There was only four members in attendance for the quorum. And because it was a three-to-one vote and one board member was not comfortable with the cul-de-sac.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you step up to the podium? One of the Commissioners can't hear you. Oh, of course.
Yeah, you're fine.
Shall I start over?
Just, no, no, we're good, we're good.
All right. The cul-de-sac length exceeding 1,000 feet and being 1,245 feet made one of the planning board members uncomfortable. He didn't feel there was sufficient rationale for allowing the exception. So therefore, by three-to-one vote, it wasn't unanimous and the recommendation from the planning board was to therefore not approve the preliminary plot.
Is that because of the cul-de-sac length?
Yes, sir. The UDO mandates, well, the design standard is a maximum length of 1,000 feet and it is 1,245 feet. Also, I should point out that there are 40 lots and one lot is a six-acre lot that's common open space. The developer would like to actually include that as lot number 41 and put a house on that. And then also, there is a stubbed street to the north that the developer had planned to reserve as open space for a future road. The UDO doesn't really allow that provision, so that would need to be constructed as a public street to the perimeter property line. Are there any questions?
Ms. McNeil, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Just for the record, the TRC committee went over this, the fire, DOT, EMS, staff members, and they were all fine with this, correct?
Correct. We, unless the TRC is a
Thank you, Ms. McNeil, for coming in tonight. We appreciate it.
Good evening.
Okay. Moving on to our next item of business would be, let's see, we took care of-
Add the remote participation for public comments and public hearings.
Right. So Ms. Parrish, you want to run that by us one more time?
I can do that briefly. This is what was emailed out earlier. Just looking forward to the next couple of meetings if we still have to meet remotely and close to the public, that we thought it would probably be good to go ahead and adopt a public hearing and public comment policy because we do foresee having some public hearings that will be necessary for the next couple of meetings for various reasons. And so this just spells it out. Public comments can be submitted to the clerk. Either an individual, they can email it to public dot comments at lee county m c dot gov. And with that, we're asking individuals to submit and indicate they want it ran under public comment section or under the public hearing. They can also submit a form, which is going to be found online, that's attached to the public comment policy. And then they can also call and leave a voicemail that can be played during the meeting. We are suggesting to move forward to have public comments and the public hearing comments to be limited to three minutes or 350 words per individual, with the chairs being able to continue to limit the total number of comments to 30 minutes or 10 people. Normally, we don't restrict public hearing comments, but given the nature of these meetings, we figured it might be best to go ahead and put those parameters in place.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the remote participation policy for public comments and public hearings, which includes some restrictions for comments during public hearings as a temporary measure to allow for public input while the county is under a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the new change in policy?
I don't know if I heard it or not, but did I understand you to say that they're limited to 350 words?
Three minutes or 350 words, yes, sir.
Okay.
But, but not exceeding 30 minutes for the total comments?
30 minutes? Did you say 30 minutes?
Total for all the comments, like, as our policy's been, you know, here in the boardroom before.
Okay. All right.
But we felt like we needed to put something in the policy in writing that, you know, three minutes or 350 words, just for a little bit more guidance.
All right. But you still maintain a way to cut them off at three minutes?
Yes, because even when, when Ms. Gamble was reading the public comments that were presented for today, Ms. Parrish was keeping time.
All right. Thank you much.
You're welcome. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. So I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Palazzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye, Madam Chair.
And aye as well, Madam Clerk. Okay. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. McNeil, for coming in tonight. We appreciate it.
Good evening.
Okay. Moving on to our next item of business would be, let's see, we took care of-
Add the remote participation for public comments and public hearings.
Right. So Ms. Parrish, you want to run that by us one more time?
I can do that briefly. This is what was emailed out earlier. Just looking forward to the next couple of meetings if we still have to meet remotely and close to the public, that we thought it would probably be good to go ahead and adopt a public hearing and public comment policy because we do foresee having some public hearings that will be necessary for the next couple of meetings for various reasons. And so this just spells it out. Public comments can be submitted to the clerk. Either an individual, they can email it to public dot comments at lee county m c dot gov. And with that, we're asking individuals to submit and indicate they want it ran under public comment section or under the public hearing. They can also submit a form, which is going to be found online, that's attached to the public comment policy. And then they can also call and leave a voicemail that can be played during the meeting. We are suggesting to move forward to have public comments and the public hearing comments to be limited to three minutes or 350 words per individual, with the chairs being able to continue to limit the total number of comments to 30 minutes or 10 people. Normally, we don't restrict public hearing comments, but given the nature of these meetings, we figured it might be best to go ahead and put those parameters in place.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the remote participation policy for public comments and public hearings, which includes some restrictions for comments during public hearings as a temporary measure to allow for public input while the county is under a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the new change in policy?
I don't know if I heard it or not, but did I understand you to say that they're limited to 350 words?
Three minutes or 350 words, yes, sir.
Okay.
But, but not exceeding 30 minutes for the total comments?
30 minutes? Did you say 30 minutes?
Total for all the comments, like, as our policy's been, you know, here in the boardroom before.
Okay. All right.
But we felt like we needed to put something in the policy in writing that, you know, three minutes or 350 words, just for a little bit more guidance.
All right. But you still maintain a way to cut them off at three minutes?
Yes, because even when, when Ms. Gamble was reading the public comments that were presented for today, Ms. Parrish was keeping time.
All right. Thank you much.
You're welcome. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. So I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Palazzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye, Madam Chair.
And aye as well, Madam Clerk. Okay. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. McNeil, for coming in tonight. We appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to our next item of business would be, let's see, we took care of-
Add the remote participation for public comments and public hearings.
Right. So Ms. Parrish, you want to run that by us one more time?
I can do that briefly. This is what was emailed out earlier. Just looking forward to the next couple of meetings if we still have to meet remotely and close to the public, that we thought it would probably be good to go ahead and adopt a public hearing and public comment policy because we do foresee having some public hearings that will be necessary for the next couple of meetings for various reasons. And so this just spells it out. Public comments can be submitted to the clerk. Either an individual, they can email it to public dot comments at lee county m c dot gov. And with that, we're asking individuals to submit and indicate they want it ran under public comment section or under the public hearing. They can also submit a form, which is going to be found online, that's attached to the public comment policy. And then they can also call and leave a voicemail that can be played during the meeting. We are suggesting to move forward to have public comments and the public hearing comments to be limited to three minutes or 350 words per individual, with the chairs being able to continue to limit the total number of comments to 30 minutes or 10 people. Normally, we don't restrict public hearing comments, but given the nature of these meetings, we figured it might be best to go ahead and put those parameters in place.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the remote participation policy for public comments and public hearings, which includes some restrictions for comments during public hearings as a temporary measure to allow for public input while the county is under a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the new change in policy?
I don't know if I heard it or not, but did I understand you to say that they're limited to 350 words?
Three minutes or 350 words, yes, sir.
Okay.
But, but not exceeding 30 minutes for the total comments?
30 minutes? Did you say 30 minutes?
Total for all the comments, like, as our policy's been, you know, here in the boardroom before.
Okay. All right.
But we felt like we needed to put something in the policy in writing that, you know, three minutes or 350 words, just for a little bit more guidance.
All right. But you still maintain a way to cut them off at three minutes?
Yes, because even when, when Ms. Gamble was reading the public comments that were presented for today, Ms. Parrish was keeping time.
All right. Thank you much.
You're welcome. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. So I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Palazzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye, Madam Chair.
And Commissioner, well, Del Rumpel, myself, yes. Oh, Lord. Okay. All right. The next item is Commissioner Smith, his item, he wanted to present for the resolution.
Madam Chair, the resolution, I trust everybody received a copy of it in the mail, email?
May I ask a question before we get started on that one?
Please.
Sure.
I looked on the first page of the resolution, and I wanted to ask legal if they have a way of determining whether or not, in the last paragraph on the first page, despite not being approved by the North Carolina Council of State, is that in fact been researched?
No.
Yeah, so they can hear.
I'm sorry. No, I haven't had a chance to review whether or not it was approved by the Council of State or if this, I think it-
Or required.
Or it's required, correct. I do think it might be required, but I haven't had a chance to review whether or not it's been approved, was approved or not. I'm sorry, I just don't know.
I know it wasn't approved by the Council.
I'm looking at a lot of information, a lot of stats that I'm not comfortable with, and I would offer a motion to table until it's been reviewed by Council.
I've received it and read it, but that's really the extent. I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, sure.
On the, on the point, there was no approval by the Council of State. I know that for a fact.
Okay.
The other specifics, now I wrote this as of, and I put dates of as of April 17th and such, so the date, the numbers change as we have, within the past few days have changes, but the gist of the resolution still stands. So I would, well, first off, we have a motion.
Okay.
Yes, you have a procedural motion, so you have to go with that one first.
So we have a procedural motion by Commissioner Reeves to table it until our attorneys had a chance to look over it. And I will say, Commissioner Smith, you know, did send it to me. I don't, I don't know if the rest of you received it. I think I got it, I think you sent it about 11:20 last night, and I didn't see it till this morning. It'll pass my bedtime, but, but I haven't had a chance to really go over it either other than just to read it one time. So there's, there's a motion to table until legal can go over the, the motion, go over the resolution. Commissioner Reeves, call for a vote?
Madam Chair, I want to let the record show that I'm not suggesting I'm in opposition.
Sure.
I just don't feel comfortable signing off or agreeing to something that I don't know to be in fact totally accurate.
Understood. Okay. So we have the motion to table, so I'll do the roll call for that vote. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Palazzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, but I'd like the record to show that I'm not in opposition, but at this time, but I would like to know about the facts and the accuracy of everything in there since I have not had a chance to review it.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Connect?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, I, I will vote in favor of tabling it, and again, for the record, not against it. I, I think I'm getting the same phone calls and emails as, as everyone else and having family members that are small business owners and are in dire straits. It is a very difficult position that we are all in at the moment. As I've talked to a couple of you and, and the conversations that I've had, you know, with, with the North Carolina Association for County Commissioners folks and NACO, my understanding as of about 3 o'clock this afternoon is that President Trump will be setting out new guidelines for us on Thursday. And the anticipation is that, that once those go out on Thursday, then, you know, the governors across the country will adjust to those new guidelines. And then, of course, as the governors adjust, then the localities adjust as well. So that, that's what, you know, I've been encouraged that a lot of the conversations I've had have, have been really nonpartisan. Everybody has the same goal, is to keep people healthy, but at the same time, get people back to work. So it, it looks like we're still floundering, and to an extent, I guess we are, because this is new ground. We haven't been here before. But we'll talk about this a little bit more later on in, in the meeting. But we'll get more information towards the end of the week, I really firmly believe, hopefully, and then what Congress is doing as we speak about another package, financial package, that includes localities, I think, hopefully, will help us out as well. So with that, we'll, we'll move on to the next item.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I mean, we can be assured that this will be on the first May meeting though, after the attorney research the data.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the financial report. It's on page 167.
I think Mr. Reeves wanted to talk about a mask policy.
Oh, oh, that's right. I'm so sorry, Mr. Reeves. I've scrawled all over my agenda here. Okay, so, Mr. Reeves, I'll let you talk a little bit about it. I think I have a copy of that somewhere here.
I simply wanted to offer the board an opportunity to take a look at Durham County's Third Amendment to the Declaration of a State of Emergency in regards to their policy change effective this evening at 5:00, requiring folks going into businesses and the public to wear a mask. I'm merely asking to take a look at it. The clerk has a copy available for anyone who's interested in looking at it. But on the grounds of safety, in my opinion, I think that we ought to at least consider what it will do in terms of trying to help prevent any more spread of this virus. I'm not calling for discussion or anything tonight. I just wanted to let you know that it's out there.
Okay. Okay, yes. I, I talked to Commissioner Reeves this afternoon and was able to, to pull this up, and Ms. Gamble, you do have it right now. Okay. So we'll, we'll have the clerk share it with everybody if she hasn't already, and just, you know, let's, let's read their policy. I know I'm reading a lot of policies from other counties right now to try to get some guidance and best practices all the way around for, for all the different things we're facing right now. So please, you know, take a moment to, to read that. It's a little bit long, but, but it is well thought out, and Chairwoman Jacobs is, you know, again, trying to accomplish, accomplish what I just said, you know, get people back to work, but at the same time, keep people healthy. So that'll be a point of discussion for later, and again, hopefully, with the President's new guidance and what'll come after Thursday night, that will probably factor into that as well.
Del Rumpel?
Yes.
I just, I just want to mention, the reason why the resolution for Governor Cooper was that his orders expire on April 29th. I think the resolution was not necessarily the stats, but make him think about not extending fully his stay-at-home policy. So our next meeting is going to be on the May 4th after he chooses whether or not to continue or not to continue his order. So I'm just, I'm just saying that for so people understand that they put it off at
Commissioner Reeves, I think Chairman Herbie, I said I was in favor of a meeting next Monday.
Okay, okay, so Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, I was simply considering what Commissioner Connect commented, and I don't disagree with that. I only ask that it be reviewed, the resolution be reviewed by council.
Right.
If you can do it by the next meeting, I'm okay with that.
Okay, okay, and I think we'll have a lot to talk about, and we probably can't wait two weeks till our regular meeting anyway, when some of the stuff, it's moving very quickly, I think. Okay, so Commissioner Reeves, are you in favor of the motion for meeting next Monday?
Yes, but I'd also, didn't you mention something about Thursday night, some information being relayed to the public on Thursday night?
Well, that's, according to the Intergovernmental Affairs Office at the White House, the notification I got this afternoon was the President was going to issue new guidelines Thursday night.
Okay. Is that something you're going to review and?
Yes, yes.
Share your thoughts?
You know, I'm not sure what they are. I just know I got a notification this afternoon.
You don't know? I'm saying, are you going to review it?
Yes.
When you do receive it?
Yes. Right, absolutely. I forward all that to everyone.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so roll call for the vote to meet as tonight, no, distance meeting for next Monday at 6:00. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, I thought, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Del Palazzo? Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye, Madam Chair.
Okay, aye as well. Okay. All right. So.
I think, Madam Chair, with a little indulgence, I'm going to rearrange the manager's report, and I'm going to actually start with the COVID-19 virus update, so that we kind of keep the momentum and the discussion going.
Okay, that sounds good.
Notified before the meeting by the Health Director that we had eight more cases today. That makes a total of 45 cases in Lee County. So, the last few days have seen, you know, higher impact, and we're still forecasted to have our peak at the end of this week. So, it's probably an appropriate time to start talking about how we would start to reopen Lee County government, not just, you know, the economy here in Lee County. So, I'll get to that in just a second. But right now, we have 170 employees who are currently working from home, 83 employee, part-time employees last week got UIC letters, so they can file unemployment. There are around 200 employees on a daily basis who are reporting to work for their regular shifts, mainly sheriffs, emergency management, DSS, and the Health Department and administration folks. So, we still have people coming to work, and still have people in our buildings. The flow of PPE has gotten better. We seem to be in the pipeline now, getting some masks and some gloves. We're still fighting for thermometers, and that's part of our issue right now, in trying to make a plan for how to reopen, is if we have to do testing, and we have to do tracing, and we have to do trend analysis, how are we going to get those things done? And there's still a lot to talk about with testing, how it's going to be done, you know, what tests are going to be used, and in our state right now, you know, whether we have the capacity to, you know, evaluate all those tests. It's a lot of information.
Crumpton?
Yes. Yes, sir?
Well, we have, do you know any updates on antibody testing?
No, sir, we talked about that this morning in our COVID team meeting, and we do not have any updates from DHHS on that yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Which, might as well go ahead and move into that. I've had, and the staff have had, a lot of questions about test results, and communicating more information about test results to the public. I think our first instinct is that in this age of openness and transparency, the first thing is, is we want to tell people what's going on. But after being warned several times by different sources, North Carolina law is clear. The Health Director is the responsible party for securing all data collected during a communicable disease event, and it is the Director's responsibility to keep that information confidential. So, there are certain things that other counties have been able to release, but due to the sheer numbers, the more numbers, the more likely they can release mainly demographic information. We haven't quite hit the number, I guess, from a statistical standpoint, where DHHS says that we can release more information. So, we're working on trying to get that information out, but the commissioners should understand that even if they asked Heath Kane for that information, he would have to turn you down at this point. We also were warned last week that if any of our employees were to test positive, unless that employee were to tell us, or we had some just incredible issue going on associated with it, we would not be able to release that information as well. So, people need to understand that as we're going into this thing where people feel like they, you know, are okay with taking the risk and getting out into public, that, you know, there's a lot of information that we cannot give out, and so we have to be careful going forward. So, as we're discussing reopening Lee County government, we have set May 4th as a date where we want to start bringing staff back to the workplace and starting preparing our facilities to reopen. In senior services, we will probably start doing the drive-through meal plan again on the 4th of May. We've been able to get food out to the clients for senior services, and have done a pretty good job there. We're also have some real issues to discuss with Parks and Recreation. There are Parks and Recreation departments throughout North Carolina and the country who have basically canceled recreation programs all the way to January 1st.
Oh, wow.
So, we have kept ours. We have not made that call. We also have not made the call on the pool. We are preparing the pool to open, but in light of, you know, some social distancing, some other issues that we have concerns around the pool, if we do open, we may have some water aerobics, we may have some small group swim lessons, may allow some of the swim teams in small groups to use the pool, but will not be able to allow just open swim, where anybody and everybody can come and use the pools. So, we're reviewing that. We're also reviewing the library operations. We will probably start on May 4th, doing the drive-up and drop-off of books, which seemed to be pretty popular until we stopped it, but Beth and her group are starting to prepare the library to move back into that. So, they have a lot of books they need to get on the shelves, get, you know, put into circulation, so they're going to, they're starting to ramp back up. And then we have issues to consider with the public interacting with our employees if we open this facility and the courthouse to basically open public access. And, you know, once you're open, you're open. And who comes in? It's a public facility. It's difficult to tell who can come in and who cannot. We want to try to continue to do some of the screening that we're doing at this building and the courthouse, but if the state opens the court system and allows courts to go back in play, it's going to be interesting to see what kind of rules they have in place that have to be talked about. So, a lot of our facilities, we can keep protected. We have areas that where employees will be on one side of a glass, and citizens can be on the other side of a glass, but there are some that are not set up that way, the library being one of them, senior services is another one. So, a lot of discussion that we're having, and trying to move towards slowly, in a progression, opening our facilities back up, and trying to get our programs back and running. Man ComMoNent Centers, I just go ahead and tell the board that I made the call to close on Sundays. On Monday morning, we had so much trash on the ground, we couldn't pick it up on a Monday. So, at that point, environmentally and from a safety standpoint, could not allow that to occur. So, I guess it's a good thing everybody's cleaning up their yards and cleaning out their garages and all that kind of stuff, because I'm doing the same. But it has created quite a mess for the county at our Man ComMoNent Centers. We already knew we had capacity issues with the growth in the county, and this event has just made things that much worse. And I know the city is now operating six days a week to try to keep up with their leaf and limb pickup, and, you know, they picked up on Saturday in my neighborhood, and you will not know that they picked up on Saturday morning, because of what everybody put out Saturday afternoon and Sunday. So, it's a tough thing to keep up with. Couple of items for y'all to consider, as we're determining how long this process goes on, there's a big discussion between local governments right now on reviewing hazard pay for employees. The town of Apex last week approved $3 per hour increase for employees that are deemed emergency responders, responders, excuse me, and essential, in that they have to come to work on a regular shift. So, there's discussion out there about that, and probably should be aware of that. And then, as I said earlier, we have pandemic leave that's already expiring, mainly for general service employees, where we split the shifts, so that we would not have the whole crew in at one time. We would split shift, and so when they're not at work, they're using the pandemic leave. Many of the employees are nearing the end of that, and the library, where distance learning and distance, doing things from home, not very conducive. So, the 80 hours are almost up, and what we're going to do after that, I don't know. So, those are the issues associated, but I took notes on for the COVID-19. I'll be happy to answer any questions before I go into the other aspects of my report and the financials.
So, what I heard you say earlier is the giving out of statistics is not kosher with the state of North Carolina's statute?
Yes, sir. Anything, basically, this is the rule, anything that can be used to trace a person who has tested positive cannot be released. So, there's a section in the law that talks about statistics, and, you know, you have to be able to show that the numbers you put out could not be traceable. And actually, demographics is used as an example in some of the blog posts that I've read, as to you have to be very, very careful. You also have to be very, very careful if you were to talk about locations of where maybe a, an infection has, you know, created mass number of infections. And so, that actually has to be reported by the state. So, a lot of these nursing homes that you heard about, the information actually was approved from DHHS at the state level to release that information.
As well as the prisons they've been reporting on?
Yes.
So, when we report there's 45 positive in Lee County, that's not a violation?
No, because we actually got that information from the state. So, when someone is tested here, the test results actually go to the state as well as coming here. So, once the state has it, they're okay with us telling the numbers. So, you know, number of people who have tested positive, the number of people who we're still monitoring, and the number of people that are, that are, we're no longer monitoring and have been released to, you know, back to go into a normal life, and deaths, which the state reports. The other issue with the deaths, and I want to caution people about in this state, is there are some states who are, you know, if your underlying issue was something that the COVID-19 actually came in, and then you died from that, but, you know, you really, your underlying health issues caused it, that's reported as a COVID-19 death. This state has tried to stay away from that unless there's a test. And right now, the chief medical examiner for the state has issued a letter, went out to all the medical examiners in the state, that there was no postmortem testing in North Carolina. So. That might change, but right now, you know, the theory was, is that we were in a pandemic, and, you know, everybody should assume that it's around us everywhere we are. So, that was the reasoning in his, in his letter that went out.
Any more questions for Dr. Crumpton on COVID-19 items? Or comments? Okay.
There being none, I'll go right into financial statements. It's pretty sad to look at this, you know, to see how good we were doing, and then knowing that the last quarter, at least really the impacts we'll have, will be from the sales tax in the last quarter. I'm excited that people want to get back to work and want to open up their businesses, because it would help our numbers as well. As I said, we have to be cautious and be careful what we're doing, so that we don't, you know, kind of like stir the bee's nest and have it come back to us. But in February, the February financial, our collection rate for taxes was already over 98%, which is excellent, you know, for this time of year. So, we're well on our way to being over 99%. You'll see that in March. So, we've had an incredible year in property tax collections. So, that's a good part, good thing to look at. And the sales tax revenues also were looking like they were going to be ahead, you know, again, for the year, but we had a little blip in December where there was a sales tax credit, you know, reimbursement, and that actually did come to us, but it came to us and went to the WB Wicker Project Fund. So, it took it out of our general fund, put it in the Capital Project Fund, and so, but you'll see, you see in the sales taxes that we're down. So, expense-wise, we looked really good. In February, I'll go to the March report, again, pretty much all the departments were running below, you know, where they should be. The only ones that were above were people that had to, you know, pay things upfront for dues and subscriptions and insurance, but that ends up working out by the end of the year, plus there's some encumbrances out there. But as you can see, for the ad lorm taxes on the March report, at 99.36%. So, had a good year of collections, and it will be interesting to see what we do for next year. Be happy to, the Capital Project Fund update, hopefully, everybody saw, got a copy of the letters that I sent to the Board of Education, Andy Bryan. letters that I sent to the Board of Education, Andy Bryan, and also sent to Lisa Chapman at the, at the community college, asking them to close these funds out instead of just leaving them open. So, we'll be, you know, we'll be closing these projects, and any money left over in it will be transferred to our debt service fund, and we'll go towards paying our debt next year. So, at the community college, the Health Science Center is finished. We're making sure all invoices there are cleared out. The Vet Technology Facility is still ongoing. They have a large animal facility that's being built, and we're not real sure, we don't think a whole lot's going to be remaining in that fund when they're finished. The Civic Center project, they have one more item that's out to bid on a walkway. When that's finished, the remaining funds will come to us. And then, the main campus and the Emergency Service Training Center, that project is basically completed, and we're just waiting for the last invoices. The WB Wicker School, as you can see, there's a lot of money left in that. We've asked the schools to get us their, all their invoices associated with it. They have not sent us invoices for some of the technology and furnishings and equipment that they spent at the beginning of the year. So, we are trying to get that from them. And the rest of the projects are still ongoing. The courthouse complex renovation, probably a good time to talk about that. We are out to bid, and today started the inspections of the buildings by the contractors. We had 17 bidders take part in the online pre-bid conference on Friday. We had, we're having 14 actually going, right now are scheduled to tour the facilities. So, what we're doing is we, we bring them in at 4:00. They tour the empty buildings, and at 5:00, they tour the buildings where there were employees, and hopefully, the employees were gone. So, that way, we're keeping the contractors away from it. Very exciting to get moving on that, and we're looking forward to having a lot of competition on that bid. 14 bidders would be a lot if all 14 bid. So, the remainder of my report, let me make sure I get that up. It's interesting doing this now on, on a computer and not, and not having it in paper. So, talked about the courthouse and government center renovations. If that bid works out, we need to hurry up and move into the Lee County Government Parks and Recreation Plan projects. So, our hope there is that we would have those projects out to bid in May and hopefully have those projects start August 1st. Want to remind everybody that the census is ongoing. The deadline has been pushed back to October 31st, but the census is trying to kind of gear up to, for the house-to-house count, which would probably make everybody nervous that, you know, they're going to have people coming to your house. You can stop that by completing your, your census. If they have your census, they will not stop at your house. They will keep on going. So, I encourage everybody so that when they, you know, sometime late summer, I feel like they can send people out onto the street and start, start counting door to door. They won't knock on your door if you've filled out the, you know, the census online or sent your paper, your paper copy in. So, I'm encouraging everybody to do it. The online took me five minutes. It was great.
That's what I was going to say. We did hours, and it took about seven minutes. And online, easy peasy, you know. We, we got the long form when we did it in 2010. This was a breeze. I liked the online.
I like to keep the post office busy.
Yes, yes. But so, census, census, census.
It wasn't even in our house a day. It's gone.
Good deal.
All right, the, we have started the 2021 fiscal year budget preparation. Lisa and I have gone through all the departments by ourselves. There were probably about six or seven departments that we're going to go back through next week and meet with them virtually on the, on their budgets. But we, we, I think we have everybody's budget but the Board of Education. The Board of Education has to until May 15th to get theirs in. So, I know that they're going to be meeting and discussing that in May. There's been discussion amongst local governments about asking the legislature to extend the June 30th deadline. I, I have the, number one, I believe we can get our budget done by June 30th. And number two, if you're not done by June 30th, there's always already a mechanism in place for you to, to, you know, do an interim budget and, you know, extend it out. But I don't think that really would help us. I think we're just going to make our best estimates and move on. Our sales tax revenues are the biggest question in the upcoming budget. You know, I know we talked about our goal to lower the tax rate. I would tell you that with the virus, that's, I'm not really have that as a priority anymore. My priority in the budget is to fund the pay plan for the, for the employees and then maintain service levels throughout, throughout the county. And that's pretty much it. And, you know, the, we talked about the pay plan at the last board meeting. We didn't take a vote, but I pretty much, you know, in discussions, think that that's what we need to do is put the pay plan in and run with it and see where we end up in June. There is one hope out there. There's a federal bill that's supposed to be running with Congress and the president about helping local governments with their revenue shortfall. It's, our estimate, I think, was like $5.7 million. And that would be enough to cover our sales tax losses that we're projecting for the next 18 months. So, if things don't get back to, you know, moving, I mean, I hope that things get moving and the sales taxes come back, but we're going to end up with a tough time if we, if we don't get a little help there or we don't get a little help and figure out a way to get this economy moving again. Our plan is, is that even if the budget is passed on, you know, by June 30th, which we expect it to, most of our larger purchases, we're holding till January 1st. We're going to take a good look for the first six months of the budget. Like I said, our number one priority will be keeping our employees going, keeping our services in place. But any big ticket items for equipment, vehicles, smaller capital purchases, training, which I don't think there's going to be, most, most of the folks where we were going to go train have canceled their trainings onsite anyway. So, we're not going to be traveling. So, I think we can make a lot of adjustments and hold money back and then see where we stay on January 1st and make adjustments after that as well. Be happy to answer any questions about the budget, and if, and if anybody thinks I'm headed in the wrong direction, let me know. No com, no comments?
How's our financial?
Yes.
Or Dr. Crumpton, excuse me?
Yes, that's okay.
If we get the funds, you know, you said something about $5.7 million, if you could say would be our part or our estimate?
Yes, sir.
What you said?
Yes, sir. It depends.
If we got that, would the, if we got that, would the, would the tax cut still be in order or would that still?
Well, I would like, I would like to tell you that, you know, we should be conservative and not, but it would depend on what strings are attached to that $5.7 million. If they just gave it as, as, to us as the cover for lost revenue, then we could talk about that. But it's going to depend on what strings are attached to it.
Yes, sir.
On our future capital projects, except for the ones that we already have funded.
Do you have a question, though, about?
Well, I was asking how Lisa was.
Oh.
Well, you know, she's, she's working hard. I'll tell you that. There are a lot of people working hard, but she's, there's a lot of talk amongst finance officers in our area, in our region, because I think whatever, you know, we're so connected as a, a community with our surrounding counties. We're trying to all figure out how, how our budgets are going to be impacted by this downturn. And it wasn't, and I told, told the staff, I said, you know, in 2007, we knew it was coming. You know, we had about 18 months to prepare. We, we cut staff, we cut spending, we, we did everything we could. This was all of a sudden. I mean, this is a sudden drop, something that you, you know, couldn't really prepare for. The thing that's good on our side is we have a strong fund balance that can help us get through this. And, you know, we have been able to eliminate a lot of the part-time staff for now. But if you, you know, put those services back in place, you got to bring them back. So, she's, she's nervous about all that. She, she, she worries about it. So, yes, I'm a little worried about how much she's worrying. So, but they're all guilty. These, these two are guilty too.
I think everybody in county government is concerned for sure.
They are, they are. But we had, you know, we had made a couple of commitments for future capital projects, and the board is going to need to review these. I went ahead and notified Dr. Bryan and Dr. Chapman that for now, we are going to keep the library and the classroom building for the Lee Early College on the back burner and not bring it forward until we can see what happens with the economy. If the economy turns and, and things do like we thought they were going to do, maybe that would be something we could decide January, February and be moving. But the commissioners also need to review the multi-sports complex bond referendum. We've been asked by several people whether we're going to continue to move that forward to the November ballot. We don't have to know that tonight, but it's something that the board needs to consider. And just keep in mind that if we cancel the referendum, the earliest this project could be considered again is in the primary, which is a general election in March of 2022. And essentially, that would add two years. So, you have pros and you have cons about, about waiting. You know, waiting, you know, you obviously give the economy a chance to turn, and hopefully, people's mindset is in a different frame of mind for a vote. But the other thing is, is that this does push us out there a long way, and we, we do have seven years to issue the bonds. So, even if they were to pass, you know, we would obviously take the time that we needed to, to issue the bonds and get moving and make sure we do things in the right financial way. So, board needs to talk about that. We do need to probably have that done before, you know, people start going into July and August. And, you know, we go back to the once a month meetings then. So, just something for the board to think about. That was a long report. I apologize, but I haven't talked to y'all for five weeks and been in a meeting. And I think, and I'm, and I know that everybody's not glad to go back to twice a month meetings, but I feel like we, we need to because going forward, I think we need to make a lot of decisions about how we're going to get things cranked back up in the county. And a lot of, a lot of that talk needs to occur with meetings with the board. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Hope I didn't put everybody to sleep.
Yep.
Madam Chair, that's my report.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Crumpton? Maybe by the time we meet next week, we can work on the delay a little bit. We'll figure, we'll figure something out. So, at this time, we'll do commissioner comments, and, and we'll, we'll let those of you that are on the line talk first. Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank from the bottom of my heart all the Lee County staff and all first responders for what they're doing for this county and the state. And secondly, I want the option of getting my own PPE equipment so I can come back to boardroom. This phone killing me.
We, we will work on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Del Palazzo?
I too want to thank our, our county staff. I mean, in all the departments, they've just stepped up and found ways to deeply meet the needs of our citizens. We did not foresee this situation, but the continual efforts and determination from our staff have just continued to ensure that our citizens' needs are met. And I, I want to end on a quote from Brendan O'Neill. He's a United Kingdom columnist, columnist. And he said, "They say that this is a question of lives versus the economy, but the economy is if it's just some kind of abstract machine, just numbers and money and profit, when in fact, the economy is people's lives. The economy is about people. It's complete with their hearts and their will." And I think that the commis, our county manager did an excellent job in his reports, and I echo his efforts in, in wanting to get our county back and running, but wanting to do it safely. So, I thank our staff, and I thank all of our commissioners for, I know the stress of an aggravation for meeting remotely on the phone, but we do what we have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodson?
Yes, I do. I want, I want to thank our staff as well, and especially our first responders. I can certainly can relate to that, but I especially, and thank you for our EMS personnel. You know, we take a lot of that for granted. You know, they respond to red calls and things like that, but, you know, nowadays, you know, they, they respond to sick calls and are at great danger of exposing themselves, but they're courageous and they do their job anyway, and I'm real thankful for them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
First of all, I'm tired of going through a drive-through to eat. I'm ready, I'm ready for the, the economy to open, and thank you for all the hard work by staff, and everybody be safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Knack?
I think, I think Commissioner Del Palazzo said it beautifully. So, echo those sentiments, and also, don't forget all those people working in our, our food services and our grocery stores and alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that everybody is suffering. The TarPO Board, the North Carolina Department of Transportation Secretary, let us know that there is going to be a shortfall, and I did send out a memo on that, but a shortfall of over $200 million in the last quarter for roads funds. I mean, if you're not driving, trucks aren't on the road, cars aren't on the road, nobody's buying gas, nobody's paying the gas tax. Sand Hill Center received an additional amount of money from the federal government in order to deal with the increase of mental issues, stresses and things that they've already projected and they're working on. I've attended Sanford City, TarPO Board, Sand Hill Center, and Fire Advisory Boards, all did it remote as well. And we got to work on this satellite delay on our phones. Those all seem to work very well. So, find out what they're doing and who they're using, and I can tell you, it will be a whole lot smoother. And while I'm wandering around in the search of various items, food line, I now walk around and I kind of notice where people are not paying attention to the one-way traffic that we are supposed to follow. So, I'm reminded of a, a segment that was talking about in the So I'm reminded of a segment that was talking about in the London Tube. And there's a particular station where it's on a curve and then you get out of the car, there's a gap. And if you don't pay attention, watch out for the gap. And they had this recording, "Mind the Gap." So I walk around Food Line when people are walking in the other end, "Mind the sign." And you'll see people look up and because we have arrows in our facilities too, so. Anyways, mind the line, mind the sign, mind your six feet and
Wash your hands.
Wash your hands.
Yeah, exactly. So one thing to to bring up lastly is about our meetings. Just to think about for for our next called meeting, special meeting, which will be next Monday night, two things. One, this seems to be something that's going to be with us for a while, at least until we get a vaccine. So as we're looking at the courthouse, you know, I look at the manager and he's like, oh, no. But, you know, we may need to think about that because, you know, as the clerk and I have talked back and forth in trying to just envision, you know, how this is going to go for a while, this room is awfully small. You know, there's there's no way we can get all seven of us and the manager and the attorney and the clerk and the staff members that we need, much less the public in here and keep six feet apart from each other. So something to think about. But in the short term, in the near future, again, as as the clerk and I were talking about, you know, I I just have a real reluctance to do our budget workshop and our budget discussions, much less vote on our budget elect or distance wise. So, you know, we were bouncing some ideas back and forth, maybe use the auditorium at the Ag Center that has, you know, the the internet capability and and things if we we need to show something on the screen or or the Civic Center, you know, something to where we could all get together but space out enough. So just be thinking about that. I just think that's something, you know, that we need to discuss next Monday to kind of get moving on some of those things. And and again, just to reiterate what everybody says, you know, Ms. Brown and I were talking a few days ago, you know, March the 3rd, she and I were in Washington DC with 5,000 other commissioners at NACO. You know, that's six weeks ago. Whoever envisioned we would be doing this and not just in our county or our state, but nationwide and worldwide dealing with this. Kudos to Dr. Crumpton specifically because staff just keeps telling me they appreciate your foresight with the laptops and having everybody ready to go home. Counterparts in other counties don't have that, you know, and are struggling. I I think we all believe, you know, in serving the public and and Dr. Crumpton, thank you very much for for seeing the road ahead clearly and and getting us ready and and in in good stead. And to our staff, my goodness, you know, I I've had citizens, you know, call me and or or and text me and say, you know, I need I had a question at such and such a department. And without thinking, I just picked up the phone and called and somebody answered and I talked to them. And then I sort of chuckled and said, well, you were talking to them at home, you know, and they couldn't believe that, you know. So the citizens are being well-served and 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 thank you to the staff for doing that. And again, our first responders, our healthcare workers, our grocery store employees, the restaurant employees, the pharmacy employees, our mechanics, restaurants and our military. You know, they're they're backstop in a lot of local government and state government in in a lot of these places that are getting overrun, you know, as always, the military shows up. And and I think especially when we're starting to talk about testing, I think the military is going to be called on a lot more because because they're part of the puzzle. And I was listening to a report from the Pentagon earlier today and and some of the plans that they have, I think they're going to fit into this. And golly day, again, how blessed we are, you know, we've got Duke and UNC and Wake Med right here and and we've got Fort Bragg. So again, we're in a great place. So just thank you, everybody. And and we are, I just for those that are listening or watching, we are sensitive to the problems with people trying to file for unemployment. We're sensitive to the people that, you know, tried to get the small business loans, you know. I don't know what happened. That's sort of above our pay grade, but, you know, it it's certainly systems that failed. And and I know, you know, I'm sure everybody on this board, you know, we're all making phone calls, we're all, you know, sending emails and and imploring, you know, state and federal folks to to get on with it, you know, and 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 help our citizens so that we can get back to work, but we can all stay healthy in doing that. So we will reconvene next Monday, but before we adjourn, we do need to go into closed session, I believe.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to go into closed session as authorized by the Remote Participation Policy Providing for Remote Participation Procedures During the COVID-19 Pandemic and per North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A5 to Discuss the Acquisition of Real Property.
Okay, so there's a motion to go into closed session. We'll take the roll call for the vote. Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Del Palazzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Okay, we're now in closed session, folks. If you've
Commissioners, don't hang up.
Yeah, don't hang up, commissioners.
Got to wait for the recorder.